So if you want to get somebody else involved, that's fine. You know, I can move along. It's not that big a deal to our firm. We do this every single day. Hundreds and hundreds of projects, millions of dollars worth of project, and have never had this sort of... What the hell? Okay.
Well, your attorney's going to have to pay you a million dollars. Three quarters of a million to a million dollars all in. And if you win a million dollars over the guaranteed maximum price, all I want to know is that for our million dollars, you're protecting us and that we're going to be made whole. Is that not an honest question?
That's fine. I'm not sure how you're going to get that guarantee. How would you like to guarantee? Would you like the second mortgage on the office buildings? Would you like my personal guarantee of you get the house and the business? What do you want?
I just want the enable.
You just want me to be a hole?
We're talking about engaging this firm because we booked some of us who believe that he can do a job and he's going to stay within budget. He's not going to handle these dollars override. So I think it's a moot point.
So just practically, practically though, if that's the case, if it's moot, if you're hung up and you're hung up on the guarantee, why did you in the revision put verbiage for guarantee max price?
Because it's pointless for most parts. I mean, it's not pointless to you guys, but in practicality, it's pointless. I've tried to tell you that for six months, but it doesn't mean anything either this contract, that contract, my contract. It just doesn't mean anything because there is so much pad in the system that guarantees that it won't be compromised. But now we're saying, well, what if the sky falls down?
I'll just sing us a song.
Karaoke, you're up.
That'd be hard.
So who's going to be in charge of making the revision?
It needs to go, it needs to go back to your people. I don't know who did this. I don't know whether you did this, but again...
I do it.
What's that?
I do it.
You do them and then look at them. He's worked with the AIA document. But one of the things that I would definitely add on the list is what the mechanism for guaranteeing, what the mechanism for, what the prescription is for exceeding the guarantee max price? I mean, no.
Mr. Kraus said you will make a personal guarantee if GMP is exceeded.
That's what I understand.
For the more you get, Josh, the more the GMP is going up. And that's very exclusive to me. Anybody could do that.
Say what?
The more you pool with this, the more the GMP goes up.
Well, GMP can't go over 15 million, correct?
Let's talk about that for a minute.
Or we will be going to the referendum.
No, you can't go to a, you wouldn't get anywhere. What you end up doing potentially, you'd add to the income tax.
So we have to go to a referendum of 15 million?
No, you wouldn't do that. Well, first of all, it would be pointless to do it in the first place because you wouldn't get it through.
Well, it would pass.
Wouldn't pass. So if you do have a financial problem with the back end of it, you may have more income tax percentage. The downside advantage, though, is you've got to share whatever you increase.
That's a horrible idea.
Probably is a horrible idea, but that's how you have to do it.
So really, there's no motion necessary because we know, I mean, even if we voted to do something, there's no...
Well, we do need a meeting.
Can we make a motion to approve the contract pending all of those things?
Certainly can.
Then I'd like to make that motion, please.
So as I understand it, the motion is that the AIA document, C132, is presented by Mr. Kraus and the council will have the following four amendments made, subject to approval. And those four amendments are that the CMA, that the CMA contract is voidable if the contingency is not agreed to. And I'll help you write these down.
Thank you.
Two, that the, there will be specific language to make sure that any contingency left over in the project will revert to the county. Number three, that Mr. Kraus will agree to having total performance bond on top of the subcontractor bonds. And then number four, Mr. Kraus will make a personal guarantee that the GMP is exceeded. That's my understanding of the four things that have been discussed as being...
Well, keeping in mind that when my personal guarantee of my family goes to the table, what's going to happen? We've got a GMP and that contingency.
Can I revise my motion to exclude the fourth point?
Okay. So the motion is that there will be, the three additions will be made and that if those additions are made and approved, that the council would agree to the documents. That's my understanding of the motion.
And the motion, Ethan Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my lady's doctor. If we have a guarantee that has no guarantee of payment, we don't have a guarantee of security. I mean...
That's my whole point. I don't understand why it was...
You'll have that same problem if you have a guarantee.
Put in there as revision.
Right?
No, I don't feel...
No, a lot, no. If you will.
So if you have a guaranteed maximum price and you use a CMC to pay that contractor the 15 and a half million dollars, it's their risk on the other side of it.
That's how I'm looking at it. I'm looking at...
Right. In this situation, we have to pay the contractor, the subcontractor, because we have direct...
You know what, Josh?
No, don't interrupt, please, sir. We are going to pay the contractors whatever is in the contract that we have with them. If it exceeds the GMP, then somebody has to make us whole. It's the opposite or it's a difference, the difference between that and a CMC where I'm going to pay the construction manager 14 and a half million dollars and that's all I'm going to pay them. And it's their responsibility on the backside of that.
Josh?
And more or less, isn't that what you're saying that you're going to do for us? Is that, you know, if we say, you know, 15 million dollar deal, then you're going to work hard. If you know that's all you're going to get, then you know it's going to come in and you're going to work for that. So I don't understand why it's so hard to do this and...
Do you want to answer that, Jack? I'm curious, too.
Depending on what those numbers are, depends on what have a problem you have on the backside. You start throwing around a million or two million bucks and you're walking the biggest boy you have to go to saw. And it doesn't make a difference what they, you know, depend on. I can tell you that.
Well, so would our county if we walk into one or two million dollars over.
Okay, that's true. But what is it really? Let's block stuff out of the air. Really? Two million dollars or maybe a year to put your family on the line. Do that. You guys are beating this to death, absolutely to death. Go with crack records, go with performance, go with experience, go with contracts that have been used hundreds of times, hundreds. And given that, never, ever have any of them gone over the anticipated budget in that financial sum, ever.
And that's what I'm saying.
So let's assume that, if will, it's complicated. Funny, every county to date in the state of Indiana and every school district in the state of Indiana hasn't had a problem with this methodology.
You're saying no one's had a problem with CMA methodology?
None of mine have seen it from methodology. Did I make you happy, Josh? That answer apparently did.
Say again.
I said, did that answer make you happy? In other words, you're a problem with CMA. And it's a problem with CMC, apparently lots of it. But I'm looking at...
We have a motion that would put the first three of the four on the table. I want to reinstate my problem with the motion in that if we're having, if we put a guarantee and there's no mechanism to pay us for the guarantee, it's not like we're guaranteeing. I restate my concern. Is there any other discussion on the motion on the floor? We also have two commissioners that I'd like to hear their input on this whole thing, too.
I'd like to comment on it.
Yeah, please.
I totally agree with Josh says that nothing so far has held up this project because we're still in the design phase. And this discussion, while I think it's been very tedious, although I think it's probably been good for everybody to understand the contracts completely through. But we are at that point right now where if we don't start doing something, we don't have our manager in place. If we don't, then we are going to start costing because the design phase is this close to being done. We're ready to move. We're ready to begin to prepare bid documents and all those things. We need somebody in place to do that. Now, saying that, I want to be completely honest with it all is that we, the commissioners, may be holding up the design phase a little bit because at the last meeting I brought up, I may be holding it up because the judges at the 11th hour came to me and said, wait a minute, we need to have a work release area. And they have some really good reasons why it should be in there. So we're asking them to look at that. That may, we may be this far away from it rather than what I said before, but it's time, it's time to act. It's time to do it. It's time to get us all working together. If we're going to build a jail, we're going to have to do it. We're also looking at the economy right now is where everybody is building. It's not just counties building jails. School corporations are building, hospitals are building. Everybody is building right now. We're not in a situation where the contractors are saying, oh my gosh, I've got all these men, I've got to get something going. They're in a position of saying, how can I take another job on? So it'd be very easy if we wait around. We need to get ours in first. We don't want to be the last bid for the year here. We got, we have, if we want to get a good bids coming in from these contractors and subcontractors, we have to do it early. If we're at the tail end, those bids are going to be awful for us. That's all I can say.
What? I've kind of dumped out of what the commissioners thought was a jail. I brought it up. And the one thing I remember, I can't remember everything anymore, but 72% of the counties are overcrowded at this point. And figure out how many counties there are, 72%, that's around 70 jails are probably overcrowded. We're a little behind. We talked about this, doing this thing, starting to singleize them before, about nine years ago. And I think the cost could have been considered a bit less at that time. There was a study done. It's probably somewhere in the courthouse here. I don't recall the numbers on that. But we're at where we are now. And we're not going to go back there. It didn't get, it got sidelined back then. I was a two-term commissioner. I thought it was important. I thought the council, the commissioners would move forward with that project. Never happened. But we are where we are today. And something needs to be done. We got law enforcement. That's wanting to do a job. We need to provide facility for them. We need to equip them. We have other emergency services in this county that have needs, too. And the longer we put these things off, the more these needs are going to cost to be fulfilled, to get the projects done. And I think Jack is definitely reputable. Ask him for a guarantee. You're basically asking for insurance on top of insurance with the bonding. And that's the way I understand it. Josh, you sell insurance. You know what insurance costs. You sell insurance, you make a profit. That's the way it works. That's the game. You put time and effort into it, that happens. You expect it to happen. Jack's in it to make money. He's also does service, too. We're considered our end products, is the way I look at it. What we end up with. I think it's very important we have somebody with the experience that knows how to do those things. He's giving us a lot of information here about overruns on projects. He can't predict the future. Nobody can do that. Although what ifs, you can throw them out there for the next two months. We're just getting farther behind on getting this thing going. We're at the point where we need to start, start going in the right direction. That's what I said. And he's, it's like me trying to bend them backwards, going out of his realm of doing business and trying to accommodate us. I think he needs some credit for that.
Is there any other input from the public?
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Sure. I don't know where the eye remote has gone. I've messed up.
Yeah.
Gator was. It's like a microphone.
I have a statement that I'd like to offer this morning. And this is going down the road mainly speaking from the aspect of daily operations of the county jail in Carroll County. I have been taught for a number of years that this governing body is charged with being the steward of the people's money. My current concern for the people questions whether or not this stewardship is taking place. The point I'm making, as this body knows, is that the people's money is leaving this county on a daily basis. As I've stated before, it is costing roughly $10,000 a month to house inmates in two other counties. As these numbers can be fluid, this monthly figure can and will fluctuate. But more recently, I learned that both counties that, who we currently rely on to accept our overflow are looking to make multimillion dollar upgrades to their respective facilities. The unfortunate issue for Carroll County taxpayers is that some of their monies, the people's money, are being utilized out of this county. I simply encourage this group, professional group, to make the right decision to keep the people's money here. Thank you.
Is there any other input from the public?
Josh, I have one more thing.
Sure. No, yeah.
I had a conversation with our county attorney. And he said, I hope, he was speaking to me, he said, I hope you realize what a situation this really is because he took to the example of Vigo County. All it took was one lawsuit going to the board, that federal judge in the Southern District. And that judge ordered all three commissioners and their attorney, all seven council members and their attorney into court. You will be there. And when they, and the outcome of that was, the judge told them what they were going to do. This is the way it is. They lost all control over costs at that point. The, and the threat was, if you do not, you're going to wind up in jail. Me, now, I don't look very good behind bars. And I don't want to be there. And we're just, we're, all it takes is this, that one inmate down here who wants to make a big stink and gets a good lawyer because of the years that we've gone by being overcrowded. We are lucky. I think really the biggest thing that's saved us so far is that we're not in that district. Clinton County's in that district. We're in the Northern District. So maybe our judge, I don't even know who it is. I know it was a lady judge down there. But our judge has not been quite so harsh on these things. I think it's something because there is that this is, this is a really serious situation that we're in of the overcrowding at the jail. We are messing with federal mandates. And we have to fix it. Thanks. Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, thanks.
And I'd also like to add that Clinton County had to give before federal judge twice before they opened the jail. I believe so. That's what the county attorney was talking about.
So there's two components there. And I do want to speak to this just briefly. I know we have a motion on the floor. But the jail, what was the population this morning?
Thirty-three, sir, in house.
Thirty, is it 32 or 34 is the capacity?
Thirty-four is our maximum. But bear in mind, state considers a jail full of 80%, so that's 27.2.
So the jail, you know, the situation is challenging. Last year when we were at 60 people, this was, you know, and the threat. Right now, we're one person under and nobody here agreed, I mean, nobody here has ever expressed that we don't want to get a jail room. We just want to be good financial stewards of building a jail and make sure that the county is protected as humanly possible. And from the financial perspective, at $125,000 a year that it costs us to outsource inmates, it would take 125 years for that to equal $15 million in jail budget. So not that that's the only reason, the financial implication, but just so everybody understands, it'd take a very long time to probably, you know, this jail will have come and gone and the next jail will have come and gone and the jail after that will have come and gone before this would pay for itself in that regard, so. It's a complicated, I'm probably oversimplifying that, but it's, it's a lot, lot of years. So anyway...
Your figure's not including if we house other county prisoners, right?
That's what costing, that's what it costs us to outsource them.
Okay.
$120,000 a year, that's 125 years will be $15 million. So, but anyway, is there any further discussion on the motion to only include the first three edits and to omit?
Restate the motion because if you omitted the four edits, I think that has been a big concern privately, because of that.
I think you're correct.
So you want me to restate what I understand? Okay, there were four potential edits. The first three are now on the table. And the council is passing a motion that would say the council will approve, subject to final language, an AIA document, C132, with the following changes. One, that the CMA contract is voidable if the contingency is not agreed to. That's by the commissioner. That two, the contract will specifically indicate that any contingency left over at the end of the project will revert to the county. And three, Mr. Kraus will agree to having a total performance bond on top of the subcontractor bonds that will be aligned. That's one, two, and three. The fourth one is not on the table, but it was discussed and is required that there be a personal guarantee if the GMP is exceeded.
Is there any other discussion on that?
I just want to say, I appreciate Bill's point about work release. And I am glad that he and the commissioners are looking into what it's going to take to put a separate, you know, area of the jail, hopefully not to add any expense to it. But I totally agree with Bill and the commissioners on working. And that's not about this motion that I just wanted to make.
Anything else? All right. All those in favor, I'm going to ask for a hand raise. All those in favor of the motion to accept the contract subject to the approval of, or subject to the addition of the first three amendments? Signify by raising your hand. Barn, two, three, four. And then opposed, same side, two. All right. The motion has carried.
I want to make sure the call's in your court. Be true on that. I just don't want to be...
Until it shows up, there's another problem with those three things.
I understand. That's why I wanted yours, so it blends with the AIA.
Eric, I just want to, being subject to approval, the council will have to...
Yeah, it's got to come back. I mean, what we're trying to do is make sure that everybody, it's a conversation. Hey, if you do this, we'll do that. Okay, great. You've now done it, looking at it. I will work with the language. And if I see concerns, I'll turn them on the other side. Otherwise, I'm sure the county commissioner has been stating several times now. And then you say, yeah, we're done. Because the contract's not ready to sign. At least in my view, you should give affirmative, we've now reviewed it and can now approve it at some point. And that can only happen after it's fully executed. Commissioner's going to have to, you know, have their counsel further execute and then we can give a full thumbs up by a motion. That's my suggestion.
So do we want a meeting after the commissioners' meeting on the 31st? Possibly to, you know, in case they review it and agree, just agree with it?
You could always set a meeting and then cancel it.
Yeah.
Do you want me to put it on your agenda on the 31st?
Yes, if it's necessary, I would.
We're done by then.
It's a contract that will come back to us again, right?
I guess Monday.
Okay.
What's that?
Why don't we have our meeting after?
It's okay.
No, there's, ours is May 30. 9:30, let's have our, make a motion. I want to make a motion to change our meeting from 8:30 to 9:30.
Can this push through?
Yeah.
9:30, I'm sorry.
33rd.
Or after your meeting.
We have asked the architect to come in on that meeting. So you probably want to, we're hearing, yeah. We've asked him to, I haven't heard if he's going to, but we've asked him to come so we can get an update at the end of the year. Where are we? Okay?
Perfect.
Yeah. It's like a joint meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to...
Okay, I've got some here. That'd be a single, it might be a joint meeting. But you're going to be, just like those two, attending and their meeting.
Well, but I would assume that their attendance is a chance meeting. You all are making a plan.
My recommendation is it be posted as a meeting for this council for a whole bunch of reasons. And one of them being, you might want to take action. And that would be up to you at that time. You may not want to take action, but it gives you the latitude to do what you want. If you don't post it, you're just sort of in the audience and, you know, just like you showed up at the same Ruby's at that time. At that point, you can't take any action. And that's, I don't think it's flexible as yet. Just point posted as a joint meeting. And I don't know what time you're going, but over time, that would be...
So now we're to 9:00 AM?
I'll make that.
Commissioners are meeting at 9 o'clock to approve hearing transfers and possibly have the hearing...
Which made a joint meeting.
So we should just have a joint.
I'll make a motion to have a joint meeting at 9:00, 30:00.
I'll second.
Eric, it's...
A joint.
How do we procedurally do that for, we're not going to meet him again before that meeting, so how do I set that meeting for a joint meeting? I don't...
You're already posted, so...
We're already posted.
I assume it's a regular, or it's already posted. If it hadn't, you can just put it in. But as long as they post that they're coming to your meeting as their own body for a public meeting, you've got two public meetings in tandem. It's fine. It doesn't have to be a joint. It just has to be two public meetings. It happens to be at the same time, same place, and you're both coming.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all I did?
Yeah, that sounds good.
9:00.
And unless it's told otherwise, it sounds like I should do that.
You're discussing?
I think that...
Is that a good idea?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
I'll send somebody else to that.
All right. So motion on the floor concerning discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries six here. All right. We have a list of additionals to be advertised. Is there any objection to...
I have one that I need to add. I received a bill just a couple days ago from Baker Tilly that will come out of the 2306, the jail. It's $25,191.51. And that is not, well, I don't have a line item for this. one nine nine fifty-one. And that is not, well, I don't have a line item for this, so I would need to put that on for the additional to be advertised. And then I also have another one for the backup generator. If, but I need, there was an editor request from Rowington Township, where trustees and commissioners decided to request you to approve me that two five thousand dollars to Rowington Township towards the cost of a generator for the use of the Rowington Township county community center by the county emergency management as a backup emergency operation center, which would be appropriated from edit or other funding secret. So, whichever it is, I need to put that to me. So, do you want it to be edit or would you rather have it somewhere else or not at all or... What it is is creating a emergency management area, so when you have a disaster that they would, Ted is working on a, a, a contract between Rowington Town.
Inter-local agreement.
Yeah, there you go. Inter-local agreement between the Rowington Townships and county to be able to use that as an emergency if we have a disaster. So, that's why they had asked for it and listed that line. So, but it has to be advertised for you to do either.
So, it would be a separate advertisement from the fourth, third, fourth. Is there any objection to adding that to the advertising?
You can decide next month.
Yeah. So, let's, what? Individual.
What was supposed to be generated?
Twenty-five thousand and one ninety-nine fifty-one.
It's ours here.
For Baker Tilly.
Oh, no, she says, she said.
I did say.
I'm sorry.
The generator was five thousand.
It has to be a different thing. We're gonna get around that. Okay.
Any, is there any objection to the rest of the advertising? So, we will pass that by consensus.
I'm sorry. Our consensus is five. I'm sure nobody objects to us. You handle this.
On to that. Cecily has something about the salary ordinance, so she can get back to work tonight.
Yep.
I just happened to think about this after we talked about the prosecutor working the eighty-four hours. According to the FLSA, you, there's a seven K exemption which gives deputies and jail officers, the, they can work up to eighty-six hours before we have to pay them overtime. That won't work in the prosecutor's office.
But there is one deputy currently, are there, no?
The way the position is wrote up, I checked with Irwin before I came back in here to tell him that. And they said that the way the position is wrote up, that is a prosecutor, it's not the same, they don't have the same benefits that the sheriff's deputies have in that it would exclude them from the seven K exemption. So, if you leave it at the eighty-four hours, you'll have to pay four hours of overtime every two weeks.
And that may be quite a net, sounds like he was thinking thirty-six hours. Ultimately, but he'd love to have them more, but he may know that himself. You're at eighty-four and I guess my suggestion on it is you wait and just directly connect because you're gonna shake the back sand.
Overhand on that, is it?
Yeah. You got time to do it.
Just a quick comment, and I don't know if this goes simply to bridge into the discussion, but, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Cleveland, but it's my understanding. Eventually, whoever he puts in that position would likely be a certified law enforcement officer, so that they have arrest authority. And so, you know, again, you know, I don't know that equates.
I don't know how that would.
I don't know, but it's just the order of work.
Can we just go with the thirty-six to get the salary ordinance? You can amend the salary ordinance.
You can go up or down, whatever. That's why I'm saying, you leave what it is at the moment, you can make the change, because maybe that's gonna do one. I have him at his door, employee. Over Nick's office, I don't know. That's up to you guys. An option. Because you're right, if he's got arrest powers, I think they're gonna be okay. But it depends on who, who is paying himself as a, as whether or not.
assessing, I talked to him, he asked me hours.
I mean, it's really gonna boil down to the legality. Nick made it really clear to me that he wants to get many hours legally. But you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay.
Well, it's one of the.
Forty would be, you have others who would ask for forty.
Yeah, that's probably.
Did he tell you the bonus is something? He told me thirty-six, but that was when we were discussing the job description, so I don't know if he talked to him.
That he wouldn't have said that when he knew what that meant.
So.
Well, he also advertised for forty-five thousand when he's going on, so there you go.
So, is there, well, anyway, yeah, let's just do forty for right now.
And do forty?
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Yes.
I've written all on the papers. Paul, we're gonna find somewhere to scratch this off. So, motion by Paul Ryder. Oh, sorry, motion by Paul Ryder, sorry. Paul Ryder, September, to, to forty hours, forty-five per hour, for the hour rate. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Motion carries six zero.
And all these enclosures, I do want you to know that I have, I did send the bills and the contracts to you, but I have checked to make sure that there is a December or November bill, that they don't have product or their whatever in the contract. So, each one of them do have one. I have an email somewhere here. It was from Nata K on hers. She remembers every year they withhold so much. Anyway, she has a contract for hers. Doesn't matter why she has it, if she has a contract. Here it is.
Is there a motion to approve the enclosures? Has all of them?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion on the enclosures? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Motion passes six zero.
Excuse me, Superior Court Software?
I'm just gonna do that one.
Okay. And then the other one, passes.
Keith Brown, September, or?
No, second.
Oh, Kim Wright. Everybody on the right. Okay. So, we, on the twelve point two, Cassie, the, your email didn't come, it came through, but there's no, oh, it did, no? The, the attachment is a, is a job description, not a... Oh, wait, hold on. That's, yeah, there's no attachment at all. It just says. So, let's start with Superior Court, that software we, so, we needed, the judge had not spent the funds because, but for next year, the reason he hadn't spent it is because he was trying to save it up, didn't use it. So, he wants to use his current twelve hundred dollars, transfer in eighteen hundred dollars, and then encumber that before the end of the year for the software upgrade or for the state system. So, is there interest in making that motion?
I think that is right. Twelve thousand, we're going to, or twelve hundred, we're going to encumber transferring the eighteen hundred. Which line?
Your software.
And then, and you cover the whole amount.
Right. And then, and we, what we're, what, what we need the motion to say is that we're giving the auditor the authority to do that until the end of the year. Correct?
Yeah, or it's just through the transfer, the, I don't, yeah.
Well, they, they have it on the paper.
Since you're approving it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Motion carries six zero. Did you track that down? Got it. Thank you. Cassie, there was another option that he emailed us about and it was, oh, it was twenty. You got weekend service, but you have to pay for it. And that's what he advised when I spoke to him because there were so few calls that it didn't make sense to pay the thirty-two thousand dollars for the twenty-four seven super ultra platinum.
Yeah, this is the next one you have on there, twenty-six. It excludes the weekends and nights, just Monday through Friday.
Well, they, this one, that eight by five doesn't allow you on the weekend.
Right, the second one, eight by five maintenance and support with two fifty incident after-hours support option is the twenty-six thousand three point five. So, we would lose our nights and weekends maintenance if something were to happen after, between five PM and eight AM.
But you don't lose it, you just have to pay for it.
You would have to, if we called, we would have to pay for it, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Right. And he said that there would have been like four calls in the, in the year.
So far, yes.
And it was a year.
Right.
Right. So, that would be a thousand dollars and then five thousand dollars to buy that extra option. Am I reading that right?
Right.
Do you think that's gonna be a problem?
I think that we will make it do if that's what you're for. Obviously, I would like you the top one, so that we don't have to worry about coming up with the two hundred and fifty dollars in incident, but.
Okay. So, the, Cassie has about, has money in her twelve point two account that will cover this twenty-six thousand three twenty-five for the, for the maintenance. We would need to transfer and encumber that money. Oh, actually, do we, do we need that from her? Because she's got a bill and we're, if we transfer today, she could just pay it.
My question though is, the bill is for the top amount, the thirty-one five ninety. It's not for the second option.
Well, if, if, you think you can get a bill before the end of the year?
No, we don't have it yet.
Before the end of the year.
No, we don't have to have it now. We're working on planes now, or Monday, it'll be the last day.
Well, he's got a quote. You can do it off the quote or is it not?
We don't pay off quotes.
I am sorry. State for weekends is first here.
No, I'm just, okay. So, question.
How much?
Look at and cover this, I'm, I'm just trying to think about your logic. Look at and cover this next month. So, I don't, I mean, as long as it was dated before the end of this year, and it was the right time. Encumbers are just better.
I thought you said you could just look at.
Oh, that's what, but then I do don't, sorry. But, so it doesn't matter, as long as the, as long as we get, if, if we're gonna encumber it.
She gets a bill for five, the end of this month, and you can come in in January and encumber it. It'll be okay. But you want it paid now, right?
Well, I mean, technically, our contract at the end of December, I mean, was ten or fifteen, I'm not sure what, but.
So, she needs to transfer in a previous plane and we can pay it. So, she knows that you can get a bill.
She's motivated, I think she can do it.
Well, I may be motivated, I don't know about them.
Yeah, well, they want paid. Yeah. All right, so, the amount for the transfer would be six point seven thousand. Is there a motion to tran, and she needs a line, which, I didn't, there may be one that's like hidden, but there wasn't one.
What is it? I had, I was just presented this this morning when I got it.
So, you know, you have twenty-seven thousand, you can.
That's based off of what he said. I've not looked at it. So.
Is this twelve point two or another seventy-two?
Twelve.
If it's not there, we can't do it, so.
She's only seventy-two, but it's two hundred and seven thousand dollars.
I know, she's got a payroll coming. But there's bills coming out, there haven't been, we don't see.
So, basically, you're gonna prove it as long as it's there. Because if it's not there, we can't do it anyways.
Right, my motion.
Question by Paul Ryder, so a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye.
I just have a little question. If the money's not there to transfer, then what are we doing?
You're gonna have to encumber it.
So, are you gonna prove and cover it?
Because we can, we can, we can encumber in January.
We'll talk.
Okay.
It's gonna be, motion carries five zero, Larry's stuff, perhaps. Can we report, is there any favor?